Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the March 19, 2019, regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its principal business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school system and thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now, Mr. Hernandez will read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El Presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 19 de marzo de 2019. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la Superintendente... Oh my goodness! Se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logro, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de la Escuela Pública de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford estamos aquí para establecer metas: escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contrato, y nombramiento de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público con el momento... Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público, por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y le damos gracias por su interés en la Escuela Pública de Hartford.
We, as the Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you, ready to take your information down. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now... Now, Mr. Hernandez will read this in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de la Escuela Pública de Hartford. Le agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Le agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre la Escuela Pública de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro de personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Para aquellos que necesiten traducción española, tenemos un miembro de personal disponible para ayudarlo. ¿Puede levantar la mano, por favor?
As I was saying, for those who might need a Spanish language translation, we do have a staff member ready to help you. Sure. First on the list, Michael Downs.
Evening, Board members and Superintendent. Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street, Hartford, Connecticut. First thing I wanted to address is the closing of the High School Inc. and Journalism and Media Academies. I'm just assuming then that you're confident that the Weaver High School project will be completed by September. I heard some nasty rumors that it might not be, but we'll go with it that it's going to be completed. Also, I have some members of my union and I were going to be looking to attend some legislative... the Education Legislative Committee hearings to be held this spring because we're still looking for the money that was taken from the school system by eliminating the vocational technical education, the middle school system, the Family Consumer Science, Culinary Library, and social workers, physical education, art, music, and guidance counselors, and social workers, etc. And the only thing that seems to be coming back are the middle school system, but that was quite a bit of money. We're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. And the money was taken by the state. It was taken initially by the State Board of Trustees, and so we think that that's where the money is, most of it. And it's up to the state to return that money to us, and we're going to go to these legislative hearings to let people know, let the state people know, that we don't have these things that are missing from our school system and aren't missing from other school systems. Also, in November, I addressed the Board concerning the need for more substitute teachers. We have... the end of the college school year is coming to an end, and this is another couple of months, and kids will be getting out of college. Now, not everybody has a job. They talk about jobs. Well, there's a lot of part-time jobs out there, and a good part-time job that's good for a resume is that of a substitute teacher for a year or two. So maybe we could send some group of people out there to these colleges, especially the ones in the Hartford area, to bring these students into... with their bachelor's degrees and obtain positions as a substitute teacher in the city of Hartford. And finally, I know who eight members of the Board of Education are. There's supposed to be nine members. I don't know who the ninth member is. I hope someone will be able to enlighten me on that subject. If I don't find out, I'll have to guess. I'll go to the council and the mayor. Thank you.
Next up is Brother Kelvin Lovejoy.
Good evening. Greetings to the Board members of the Hartford Board of Education. My name is Brother Kelvin X. Lovejoy. I'm a resident of Hartford, parent, community organizer here in our city. I'm here today to speak very briefly about the quality of education. I was here in January, and so this is a continuation. Especially focused on the reading and math scores for the past two years and the low proficiency amongst the children of Hartford. Our children are our greatest resources that we have here as citizens in this city. Today, while I was facilitating a training for a group of young adults, 18- to 25-year-olds, I had to explain to them the reality of the school-to-prison pipeline and the disproportionate way that the school-to-prison pipeline is negatively impacting black and brown children here in our city. I had to continue and explain to them and help them to understand how the pipeline and where the pipeline begins and how it starts with the lack of quality education. With that said, I asked rhetorically if you have visited the website Weaver2019. This website contains the 27 recommendations for the new Weaver High School to open later this year. I asked again rhetorically, have you seen these recommendations and have they been reviewed by the Board for consideration? Lastly, I will say that these comprehensive recommendations need to be taken under consideration for quality outcomes, not only at Weaver, but across the city of Hartford as it pertains to raising the level and quality of education for our children. Please view the website. Again, that is wwwweaver2019.com. What you will find are the inputs from the community as it regards school climate, family, and community engagement, student-centered learning, and partnerships with higher education and industry. Thank you.
Next up is Jason Ferguson.
Hello, hello. My name is Jason Farkason, Hartford resident, proud Weaver High School alum, graduating in class of 1999. Our 20th anniversary will be this year, and I'm worried about a lot of things. One of the things is the physical component of the building. I wasn't able to make the tour of the building. That was last week, number one, because the information provided to the public was late, and the tour of the building is during working hours for parents and people of the community. Felt that was disrespectful. I think it should have been held at 4:30 or 5:30, and it shouldn't be limited to a number of community individuals who have a stake or community individuals and stakeholders who provide a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to be involved in that process to view the school. Again, I was told based on that tour that it was a lot of things that were eliminated from the program based on some budget cuts. I was also informed that the neighborhood component of the schools was the area that received the majority of the cuts, that the other component of that building received everything they needed. Again, that's one of the things that I want to place on record. Again, Brother Lovejoy spoke of Weaver, wwwweaver2019.com. It's a website that I believe all Board members should take a hard look at, all the recommendations the community, parents, stakeholders put together. The only thing that's consistent about Weaver High School is the passion and drive of Weaver High School, the steering committee that's place of stakeholders. The only changing process, only changing thing that occurred during that Weaver process is the Board members, it's the Superintendent, and the mayor. Those are the only things that constantly change. We've had been consistent. We wanted to be at the table. We asked for transparency regarding the dollar amounts regarding the Hartford Building Committee that meets monthly in the library. They talk about every dollar, cents, nickel, coin involved in every Hartford School construction project, painting, new buildings, renovations, all right? I've been asking for details on dollar amounts for Weaver High School. That's an FOI. It's okay. I request thousands of pages of information. However, but when I ask people within the city, on the Board, what have you, what do they know about the Hartford School Building Committee? They know nothing. And I think it's sad that people who we entrust our information about how the dollars being spent across the city and the district, that these people who sit on certain Boards, who sit on multiple Boards, this Board and the other Board, don't have a clue. And I ask that we take another look at that recommendations about... because we use those recommendations not only for Weaver, but ground zero for the whole entire district. If a Board member hasn't seen it, if you didn't receive those recommendations based on the communication we have, they're supposed to be handed from the committee to the Superintendent, to the Board. If you didn't receive it, I ask that you go look for it yourselves. We are not wasting any more time going through the line of communication that we were told that we're going to be able to have. I was told, and I agree this, if you're not at the table, you are the meal. The community doesn't trust individuals on the Board. We don't trust HPS. We don't trust the city. We are sick and tired, and for those individuals that we voted in, we're not asking for you to help us. We demand you to come and help us. We put you in those seats, and you can be replaced. Please remember that. It's voting season. We all know that there's going to be some individuals walking around the city, going to every community meeting, asking for your vote. I'm not... Don't ask me for my vote. I need solid resolutions about Weaver High School. I need solid resolution about MLK. That MLK fence came up late. It's supposed to be up earlier. It's going to be another delay in that process. We need to be forthright on transparency of communication, right? The community is not going to sit by in any one of these schools waiting for you to help us. We need you all here, and we're not demanding your help. We want your help. So part of this communication is, when I go back to my seat, I'm going to have some... hopefully, I'm going to have somebody from HPS take my email down and answer my questions within the next 48 hours.
That concludes public comment. Can you give it to Christina? Okay, we move on to reports. And first on is the Chairman's Report, and an item that just came to me before the Board meeting. Our colleague Tiffany Glanville has resigned from the Board. She is moving out of Hartford and thus no longer qualifies to be a member of this Board, and she has resigned effective today. This month, we reorganized Board committees. Most of the Board's work is done at the committee level. At our monthly committee meetings, we receive reports from senior staff on various aspects of the district's work. There are opportunities for us to learn, ask clarifying questions, monitor the implementation of the DME, review contracts and new initiatives. We often share ideas and engage in problem-solving, but committee meetings are not management meetings. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent, so Board committees do not issue directives to staff. They do offer recommendations to the Board and the Superintendent. Following are the standing committees and their composition. The Financing Audit Committee deals with matters pertaining to the development and recommendation of the school system budget, review and maintenance of financial forecasts, and monitoring of financial affairs of the Board of Education, including contracting practices, budget allocations, and expenditures in the school system audit. The Chair of the Committee will be Ms. Kim Oliver, and members are Shante Brody, Julio Flores, and Craig Stolling. Family and Community Engagement Committee reviews and assesses indicators of parent and community engagement practices, reviews the results of an annual customer satisfaction survey, reviews and assesses constituent service reports. The Committee works closely with the appropriate staff to monitor functioning of school governance councils, as well as establish and monitor policies and processes that promote more effective engagement between families, schools, students, the Board, our partners, and the system. The Chair of that Committee is Ms. Shante Brody, and members are Juan Hernandez, Craig Stolling, and Karen Taylor. School Choice and Facilities Committee focuses on areas of facilities, master planning, school design and redesign, construction and maintenance, public use of facilities, attendance, area studies, transportation, state and federal legislation that impacts school facilities and enrollment inequity. Karen Taylor will be Chair, Aisha Clark and Juan Hernandez will be members. The Policy Committee is responsible for the review of all policies and recommendations or revisions for Board of Education policies. The Committee monitors the implementation of Board policies, continues to stay abreast of local, state, and federal laws and regulations to determine and apply implications for Hartford Public Schools policy development and revisions. Aisha Clark will be the Chair, Kim Oliver and Karen Taylor are members. The Teaching and Learning Committee advises the Board of Education on matters relating to teaching and learning, including instructional programs used in district schools and their relevance and alignment to the local context and professional development for the staff. The Committee monitors and assesses support programs that are part of the teaching and learning experience, such as special education, support for English learners, social work, and guidance services. Mr. Juan Hernandez will be Chair, Shante Brody, Julio Flores, and Craig Stolling's members. The Human Resources Committee is different from other committees. This Committee meets to hear cases in which employees have appealed their termination, usually through nonrenewal contracts. Julio Flores is Chair, members Aisha Clark, Kim Oliver. I had Tiffany Glanville on a lot of committees, but obviously, she's no longer with us. In addition to Board committees, we have representation at several partner organizations. We are, or soon will be, members of CAPE, the Kinetics Association Boards of Education, which provides research, professional development, opportunities for Board members, and it's a place where member organizations work together on educational issues that are common across all districts, and also on developing legislative agendas as it relates to education, and the representative there would be myself. Craig, the Central Regional Educational Center, is a magnet school operator and also an educational service provider to districts in central Connecticut. The Craig Council consists of representatives from the Boards of School Districts served by Craig, and our representative will be Kim Oliver. The Hartford Public Library is an important academic partner, and given that both the library and the school district are experiencing serious financial constraints, we have been working together to develop partnerships in which we may offer joint services to the public and share resources, and Karen Taylor continues as our representative there. The Hartford School Building Committee is a partnership between the City of Hartford and Hartford Public Schools. It manages all capital projects once they have been approved by the proper authorities, consists of three members appointed by the City Council, three members appointed by the Board of Education, and a seventh member elected by the six appointed members. Our representatives will be myself, Craig Stolling, and Dr. Tota Rodriguez, and we will also have alternates, designatees. The membership in the Hartford School Building Committee will be part of our consent agenda because it requires a Board vote. And that concludes my report. I'll read the report to the Superintendent. Madam Superintendent?
Can I really quickly, Mr. Chair? Can you also announce the fact that those external committees will be submitting written... I could... So these external partner committees, CAPE, Craig, Hartford Public Library, Hartford School Building Committee, will also submit monthly written updates going forward to the Board of Ed as well?
Yes, and one other thing in relation to that is that we will be including all the committee reports as part of the package that you can pick up when you come into the meetings, because being that we're trying to control the time of our meetings, we no longer read our committee reports aloud. Now, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman Flores. Good evening, everyone. So I'm actually going to start the report with celebrations. It is something that we're hoping is happening throughout all of our schools. This is a very challenging time of the year where we, you know, all begin to feel extra overwhelmed, and so we're trying to be very intentional to celebrate especially the little things. So today, at the beginning of my report, I'd like to acknowledge student achievement in athletics. Our student athletes at the middle and high school level recently closed out their winter sports season, and I'd like to congratulate our faculty managers, our coordinators, coaches, officials, volunteers, our staff, our administrators, I see some here today, and of course, our families and our student athletes who tirelessly, tirelessly represented Hartford during their interscholastic competition year-round. We recognize you. We appreciate all that you do. So tonight, we'd like to recognize and highlight student athlete achievement at the middle school level. So I would like to ask Nicole Porter, our District Athletics Operation Manager, to join us.
Good evening. Hello. Okay. Good. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and to the Board of Education. I do feel privileged to be here to honor our student athletes, our families, our coaches, our administrator, all of the aforementioned people that you mentioned. All right, this is better. Thank you. So again, good evening, and I am the Operations Manager for Hartford Public Schools, and it's my honor to present some awards tonight to some very distinguished people in our middle school athletic league. I did want to take an opportunity not to only shout out the schools that are here tonight, but I did also want to take this moment to acknowledge the schools that did participate, excuse me, in the Hartford Middle School Athletic League for the winter season. Those schools are BSTEM, West Middle, Renzulli, Sand, Milner, Cannelli, McDonough, Global, Naylor, oh, and the list goes on, Belize, MD Fox, Capital Prep, and our friends at Jamoki. So thank you all very much. Thank you to the administrators who made the allowance to have sports in your schools. We do recognize it is tough, but we really appreciate you doing that. I would also, again, like to thank the Superintendent for providing this platform for athletics programs and initiating our inaugural Superintendent Athletic Achievement Awards. It speaks volumes to not only the commitment to improving school culture in Hartford Public Schools, but also the importance of athletics in the classroom, in our schools, and also in the community at large. So tonight, we will be presenting awards to our middle school coaches, coordinators, and championship teams. I kindly ask, please, the board, if you may, to stand, as you will be receiving our honorees tonight, and also have a brief photo op. This way. Thank you. So honorees, no problem. Honorees, when I do call your name, I'm kindly asking you to stand and come up to the stage and stand in front of our board. So now for our awards presentation. So the Hartford Middle School Athletic League recently had their first vote for Coach of the Year for boys and girls, and Coordinator of the Year. Both coaches and coordinator of the year were voted by principals and their peers. The requirement was for them to vote and state why this distinguished person deserved this honor. Before I call their names, I will read some excerpts of the comments. So I'm not going to reveal the name. This person uses sports as a tool to connect with students on and off the court. This person is also a great role model to these young ladies by leading by example. The winning attitude these young ladies exhibit shows school pride and a great leader behind him. His dedication goes above and beyond school. This person is relentless when it comes to caring for our children and in and on the basketball, on and off the basketball court. This coach has played a constant and vital role in our student athletes' lives. He's looked up to by our students tremendously. This coach is Louis Burgos from Caneli. Mr. Burgos, please stand. So in honor of our first inaugural Superintendent Coaches Award, I would like to present this to you. Thank you very much. It's not all about winning for him. He tries his best to teach life lessons, and as the season goes on, he helps them. He even dresses like a real NBA coach to show the kids and adults how it's done. He is selfless. Coach provides positive motivation for the kids on and off the court. He even keeps a pile of practice shorts handy for our kids who can't afford them. He's amazing. This person works extremely hard and is dedicated to all the boys he works with. His support for each youngster is unending, and while he encourages each child to maximize his potential, he also has high standards and expectations for them all. This person is Coach Dennis Aniselli from Sand. This next person we would like to honor is for Coordinator of the Year. Again, all these folks were voted on by their peers. OMG, what can I say about this guy? He is one of my favorite people on earth. He's the reason behind all of my coaching success. He's been there for the kids as far as developing them since he was a kid himself. He is a true leader and has a great example of what a coach and AD is all about, full of joy, passion, and drive for the City of Hartford. I love this dude hands down. Thanks for all you do. Another comment. This person is extremely responsive and easy to get a hold of. He sets an amazing example for his players and portrays awesome sportsmanship to all. This person is all about the kids, willing to help at all times, and also loves to collaborate with schools that will be beneficial. This person is Tim Cheever. Thank you. You got it. So again, I would like to thank our girls' Coach of the Year for the Hartford Middle School Athletic League, Mr. Louis Burgos. Also, our boys' Coach of the Year for the Hartford Middle School Athletic League, Mr. Dennis Aniselli, and then also our Winter Coordinator of the Year for the Hartford Middle School Athletic League, Mr. Tim Cheever. And we would also like to thank the administrators for each of these schools who helped see the importance of not only having some really great folks to help our kids in athletics, but also the foresight to make sure that we keep athletics in our schools. So thank you very much. Next, I would like to also present our championship team presentation. So do I have Capital Prep, and do I have MLK in the house tonight? Excellent. So this past Monday, not past Monday, but last week, we actually had our Middle School Athletic League City Championship, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank some of the folks who made that happen. Obviously, all of our principals and ADs and deans, SPOs, our facilities team, our food services team, our custodians, our executive assistants, our behavioral techs, our teachers. If I missed anyone, I do apologize, but it really is a team effort, and that's no pun. We would also like to thank our community partners who helped with this, Lynx Media, DJ Monster P., who spent some really nice music during our championship. We had Ronel Montsu provided awesome announcements during the game, and we had Ashawn Bent who also did that. We would also like to thank our whole school at SMSA, Principal Colon and the faculty athletic director there, Ms. Heidi Schmidt, and we would also like to thank the custodial staff there as well. And last but not least, I would like to thank our interns. We have some Hartford Public Schools interns here. We partner very closely with our career development team, and every season, we're able to get some. And I have one gentleman here tonight. Can you please stand up, sir? His name is Mr. Daniel Warren. He's from Classical, and he helped to make sure we had a great night that night. So as I call your names, I understand not everyone is here tonight, but we do have a good bulk of you. I have some awards, and again, these are the inaugural Superintendent Athletic Achievement Awards. We will be presenting them to you. We will give them to your coach following your names being called. I kindly ask that you walk up to the stage and get your photo op. You deserve it. So, oh, thank you. I have Janaya Grant, Capital Prep Magnetory School. Savannah Fulton. Morgan Elmore. Sinia Wallford. Kamani White, our MVP of the game. Janiah Anderson. Andrea Green. Cassian Montanez. Anaya Hamilton. Janice Portis. Anaya Simmons. Amory Mickens. Anaya Kinzie. And the team manager, J.C. Kaluskas. This team was coached by Coach Thomas Allen, so we want to thank all of the team members. If you guys could kindly walk up to the stage, don't be bashful. No, stand up there and get your moment. Take your picture. Take your picture. Yeah. From here, your 2019 Hartford Middle School Basketball City Champions, Capital Prep Magnetory School, Preparatory Magnet School, sorry. We would be remiss if we did not mention those who actually helped the students get to where they are, and we would like to honor Coach Thomas Allen with a plaque, a game plaque. Thank you. We would also like to honor Christopher Fulton, if he's here tonight. Next up, we would like to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Middle School. Please, when I call your names, just start to walk up. Jonathan Christian. Kavon Bartley. Kavron Bartley. Trajan Gamble. Richard Ayala. Alfred Malave. All right. Devon Buford. Damar Artis. Daquan Nelson. Shakor Weaver. Thank you. We would also like to present Coach Sherry Hall with a game-winning plaque. In honor of Women's Month, we had two coaches, two female coaches at Coach Boys Team, so in honor of Women's Month, let's give it up for that. Also want to honor one of the coordinators for MLK, Ms. Leah Baranowski. There you go. Ms. B., Coach B. Thank you very much. And again, I would also be remiss if we did not honor and thank Dr. Dorian Crawford of MLK, and also thank and honor Dr. Kitsey Ferguson of Capital Prep. Again, we do appreciate your leadership and making sure that we have a great sports program. So congratulations to both teams, championship teams, and congratulations to all of our sports teams.
Thank you, everyone. My report is going to be condensed. So I have three items that I'd like to report on, although the report that, the written report that you all are going to get is much longer, and it will also be available to the public. We're going to post it as well. The first area of reporting is around our Next Generation Accountability Report. You do have a copy there of a presentation. I will not go into all of the details of the presentation. I'll actually give you a summary. So on February 22nd, the Connecticut State Department of Education did release the fourth year of accountability results for Connecticut districts and schools. The Next Generation Accountability Report, what we call ENGAAR, results for each school contribute to our district's overall progress and rating. The results of the report also relate to the larger work of continuous improvement that we are doing in Hartford Public Schools. Although we use our own internal measures to assess student performance and progress, the ENGAAR does provide us with a comprehensive and more holistic view of the district and schools across a diverse range of indicators, allowing us a different perspective while at the same time allowing us to compare ourselves not only with other schools, among schools in the district, but also throughout the state. Overall, the district's 2017-18 Accountability Index rose 1.8 points from 57.8 in 2016-17 to 59.6 in 2017-18, which is a growth rate that is on pace with the state as a whole and also with our peer districts. The academic indicators do show promising gains while additional strategies are needed. If you look in your presentation, you know, we have 12 indicators, and overall, we see that most, actually, all of the academic outcomes and those indicators did see improvements. And the, what we call the culture-climate, if you will, related indicators around chronic absenteeism, attendance did show declines, and so there's work to be done there, which we already know those are areas of improvement for us and areas that we are prioritizing in our district model of excellence. When we look at the entire picture, we know that accountability scores increased for 32 out of our 45 schools, so 71% of our schools had increases in their index. Hartford Schools represented 11 of the 99 schools that made double-digit gains across the state. Seven of those were Hartford Neighborhood Schools. Some specific highlights: Asian Studies Academy at Belizee School is among the top eight schools in the state with the most improvement. Expeditionary Learning Academy at Moylan earned the highest accountability score among our Hartford Neighborhood Schools, and Great Path Academy earned the highest accountability score among the high schools in our district. In your report there, you have a list of all the schools and where they fall within each category. This is a presentation in detail that is going to be presented in the Teaching and Learning Committee. There's going to be a deeper dive that happens there. Just wanted to remind us that, you know, it's important to understand that school performance and progress on these indicators do contribute, again, to the overall district standing. We are collectively responsible and accountable for these results at all levels of the organization, and, you know, effective data teams that use relevant and timely data for continuous improvement of teaching and learning are a strategy that, you know, is prioritized for us in the DME. And so throughout our work with the data wise, we are strengthening our culture of consistent and continuous improvement, while we focus on evidence and while our internal data points serve as the daily drivers, if you will, of our continuous improvement process, these indicators, these 12 indicators represent the adequate annual growth toward the state expectations. During the March Administrators Institute, we did engage with our principals in an initial review of these results, and school principals will continue this work with their instructional leadership team so they can fully understand how the indicator results is going to inform improvement and progress in their schools. The second item I wanted to report is on the Aspiring Leader Series, which kicked off at the end of February, and it's the Principal Pipeline Committee kicked off the first workshop of our series, and we have a team of cross- of our series, and we have a team of cross-content and cross-departmental members that are working on developing our own principal pipeline, work that is made possible through the support of the Wallace Foundation Grant. And the work consists of developing a systematic and competency-based approach, so that we can support building of leadership capacity within our current staff. So some highlights of the program. The participating aspiring leaders are staff currently, Hartford Public Schools staff that have the O92, which is the Administrator Certification, or who are enrolled in the O92 Certification Programs. We have over 100 staff members in Hartford Public Schools who hold the O92 Certification, who are currently not in a leadership position. And so the workshop was attended by 43 participants who self-selected to attend this voluntary series of professional learning. And the Chief of Schools explained the principal pipeline work, they explored the principal job description for Hartford Public Schools, and there was also a panel discussion with our current assistant principals and deans. We were fortunate to have representation in those that volunteered to participate in this series. We had high school, magnet, elementary, neighborhood, school participation, as well as various levels of experience on the 10-person panel, which was moderated by Executive Director Tyrone Richardson. The next session is, you know, at the end of this, next week, actually. And participants were asked to plan out change initiative projects that are connected to the DME, and so we just wanted to highlight the work that is happening internally, in terms of developing, you know, having the pipeline, but also all of those that participated in the series. And lastly, my last report is from the Office of Academics, and I know that I have a video that's going to complement the report. We continue our work on the Seal of Bilinguality, and we had information sessions that took place with high school principals, school counselors, parents, students, and we have currently 300 eligible high school students that represent 27 languages. We've identified the students so that they can begin the language assessment process, and so we have a video that's entitled "I Am Bilingual: What Is Your Superpower?", and we're going to feature that, and I know that also here with us today, we have some students, and so because they are here and they're so proud of what we're going to highlight, I'm just going to read out their names while also acknowledging the leadership of our Director of English Learner Services World and Dual Language Programs, Daisy Torres. So, from Buckley, we have Gia De Leon, Joel Veraceda, and Angela Lara. And we have, from Hartford Public High School, there they are, from Hartford Public High School, Sharik Paco and Joseph Jimenez. And so I'll ask Christina if you can queue up the video.
I am so pleased that Hartford Public Schools will be honoring our graduating seniors this year with the Seal of Bilinguality. Seal of Bilinguality honors and recognizes students who obtain a level of proficiency in more than one language. The Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality is a seal that is affixed to a student's high school diploma and transcript. It provides immediate recognition of critical 21st-century language and communication skills. Any graduating senior who meets the language arts requirements for graduation and demonstrates proficiency in another language through a state-approved assessment is eligible. In Hartford, the seal applies to over 27 different languages.
The Connecticut Seal of Bilinguality aligns with our district model for excellence priority on teaching and learning for the development of skills, knowledge, and voice that students need to graduate ready for college and life. Bilinguality is beneficial for our learners culturally and academically, allowing them to develop into strong global thinkers who are prepared for the 21st-century workplace. Our strategic operating plan works in service of the whole student, and that means honoring their strengths and maximizing their assets.
I'm bilingual, what's your superpower? Soy bilingue, ¿cuál es tu superpoder?
I am bilingual, ¿cuál es your superpower? Yo tengo aquí claro, soy goa, canada.
I'm bilingual, ¿what is your superpower? Yo soy bilingue, ¿cuál es your superpoder?
I'm bilingual, ¿what is your superpower? Y te la quedan, te regale.
I'm bilingual, ¿nada se me no cambie?
I'm trialingo, ¿cuál es your superpower? Si soy triango, ¿cuál es tu poder?
I'm triango, ¿what is your superpower? No voy a lugar, tatu, ni ni go voy a co. No voy a lugar, chistato, eh, engu futobe.
Who are bilingual? What's your superpower?
Bilingualism is definitely an asset for me. It helps me to communicate very effectively with the community, with my parents, and definitely with my students.
The Seal of Bilinguality tells scholars that I can read and write in two languages.
The Seal of Bilinguality honors the language of my family.
The Seal of Bilinguality allows me to compete in the global market.
I'm a principal of a school that has a predominantly large population of students that speak 27 languages in the school, because bilingualism is definitely a superpower.
I'm bilingual, ¿what's your superpower? Soy bilingue, ¿cuál es tu superpoder?
I am bilingual, ¿what is your superpower? Yo soy bilingue, ¿cuál es tu superpoder?
I am so proud to be bilingual, ¿what's your superpower? Yo soy bilingue, ¿cuál es tu superpoder?
Hey, I'm bilingual, ¿what is your superpower? Dime dígalo, si tiene y perdina mi su.
Soy bilingue, ¿what is your superpower? Soy bilingue, ¿cuál es tu superpoder?
Ask how you can obtain the Seal of Bilinguality at Hartford Public Schools.
That concludes my report. Thank you, students, for all that you do and for shining a bright light on your superpower.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and just like to say that it's our intention going forward to have a celebration every month, because there's a lot of good things going on in our district, and we don't often get enough opportunity to hear about them. And now we move on to our student report.
Thank you. Good evening. The Student Senate met on March 6th with Mayor Bronin and Superintendent Dr. Torres Rodriguez to present a rough draft of our research proposal. The Student Senate is researching how a student's home environment may result in a student missing school or not excelling in school. We would like to add a heart in the middle of the district's model of excellence to show that students' well-being goes beyond the classroom. This heart will help to raise awareness and build strong community that includes partnerships and parent and neighborhood involvement. We also prepared statistics, facts, and personal stories on subjects including sex education, mental health, drugs, homelessness, and food programs. We worked with the mayor and the superintendent to further our research on these topics. With the mayor, we discussed ways in which we can get more students involved at every level of the community-building process. This means that students are able to help lead the awareness for their peers and at their schools. In addition, the mayor is starting 100 Days of Homelessness Initiative to provide individuals and families homes. The Student Senate plans to be part of this and contribute to spreading awareness. We plan to meet with the superintendent at our next meeting to further our understanding on the community-schools framework, and we also will be meeting with Tracy Avicoli about sex education and curriculum. After our April meeting, the Student Senate plans to have their research completed, and we would like to present what we have learned and our recommendations to the Board of Education as well as the public. Also during our March 6th meeting, we met with Millie, the Executive Director of Hartford Parent University, and Deborah Biglow. They joined us for our research presentation and invited the Student Senate to teach a class on mental health to parents in April. In addition, they invited the Student Senate to their monthly meetings, as they would like to add student voice to their organization. They asked the Student Senate to help with encouraging students to come to their meetings, as it helps students and parents educate each other as well as share policy ideas. Their plan is to have student representatives on their board, where they will be able to voice their concerns and vote. The Student Senate is very excited to work with the Hartford Parent University and grow our partnership with the parents. This is a great step in our idea for our community engagement and building awareness for our students. Thank you for allowing me to give a report.
And as I mentioned earlier, the committee reports are included in the agenda package, but I will offer the opportunity if any board member wants to highlight anything from their committee meetings. Then we move on to the business agenda. Item 4.1, Administrative Appointments, and motion that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Ashley Martin to the position of principal at Burr School. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Someone could, wait, don't walk. Careful. So, and I know Chief of Schools Avila is going to join Ms. Ashley. Ashley Martin. In her first year at Burr School as acting principal, Ashley, or acting principal, Martin has proactively addressed many of the concerns and challenges that the school community has had around chronic absenteeism, discipline, academic rigor, and school culture. She works really hard to be intentional in how she leads by example when operating, managing the school attendance team, for example, and leading professional development sessions. Currently, at Burr, chronic absenteeism and suspensions are down for the first time in over a year. Her efforts to increase academic rigor are paying off, as we see evidenced by the growth on the interim reading assessments. Ashley has put systems in place and holds herself, staff, students, and parents accountable for student success. She's got some energy, certainly a lot of passion that flows throughout the building. We're lucky to have her with us here, and so I'll turn it over to Ms. Avila.
Ms. Martin has served as acting principal of Burr Community Schools since July 2018. Ms. Martin comes to Hartford from Oakland, California, where she served as a teacher and principal from 2007 to 2018. In 2012, she was nominated and accepted into the New Leaders Aspiring Principal Program and received her administrative credentials in urban leadership. As a principal in Oakland, Ms. Martin led her school community through a district initiative, redesign process, and partnered with the School Design Lab to develop an innovative 21st-century learning model. During her tenure, she has also served in several leadership and advocacy roles at the district level, including the Principal Advisory Committee, Budget Advisory Committee, and the CFO Interview Committee. Ms. Martin has an unwavering belief in our students' potential and a strong dedication to working in partnership with the community and families to ensure our students are equipped with the skills to be college and career-ready. When speaking with students at Burr School, they say they love their new principal, she smiles, she's in classrooms, she really knows us, we're happy now.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Martin? There being none, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I was moved and seconded. All those in favor of appointing Ms. Martin as principal at Burr School signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Well, good evening, Madam Superintendent and members of the board.
Good evening.
It's such a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to lead at Burr Community School and also in Hartford. It's been such a joy to work in partnership with our students, our families, and our staff to ensure that all students thrive. I'm very proud of the work that we've done so far this school year, and I'm just very grateful to have the opportunity to continue that work forward. I have an unwavering belief that our school has a potential to be a top-choice community school, and I want the community to know that I'm dedicated to ensuring that our school reaches that potential for all of our kids. Again, thank you for your belief in me as a leader. I feel honored and blessed to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4.2, Approval of the Closure of High School, Inc. As part of the district model of excellence and the reconfiguration of our schools throughout the district, the Board needs to vote on the Closure of High School, Inc. and Journalism and Media Academy to allow them to be part of the new Weaver High School, which is scheduled to open for the 2019-2020 school year. The motion right now is that the Board of Education approve the closure of High School, Inc. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, just want to reiterate what you referenced, Chairman. This is in alignment with the district model of excellence and the reconfiguration. We did have, as per Board policy, the hearing, and so it is in alignment with the work that we're doing.
Do I, you have a question, Ms. Oliver?
A comment, if you will. So, as a proud Weaver graduate, Class 92, I was actually part of the community design team for High School, Inc. And one of the reasons I'm very excited is because the school always belonged in Weaver, and I'm so happy to see it be back where it belongs and be back home. I was also part of the advisory board when we still were at Weaver and it was called the Academy of Finance. So I'm just so proud and pleased. I know this is a technicality this evening, but I think that this is actually not a closure or end, this is actually the beginning, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing our students over on Granby Street. So, thank you.
I just have some inquiries. I want to highlight Mr. Downs's concern about whether, if Weaver is not to be on schedule, can you talk a little bit more, give us some additional background on, you know, the guarantee around Weaver being open on time, why this, in fact, is like a technicality based on the DME vote that we took? Just a little more background would be helpful to, like, allay some of those concerns.
So we are, as of today, actually, there was a meeting, though not related to Buckley, but I always ask every time I have an opportunity to engage with Arcadus, and so we are on schedule. The plan is for us to open in August for our students with regard to the technicality. So each of the schools now has, is operating as their individual schools, and with each of their respective individual codes, and so as part of the process, we know that there is going to be a merger under, you know, it's Weaver. However, I do want to clarify that, you know, students are still going to have their pathways to Ms. Oliver's point. However, you know, we cannot have the two schools in the building with their each individual codes. This is going to be a shared space, one school, and students will have the opportunity to participate in, you know, the High School, Inc., the Journalism and Media Academy. They will have career and technical education opportunities, and of course, early college experience and college credit opportunities. And so, yes, technicality, but also part of the larger design.
Thank you for that. And in the event that Weaver doesn't happen to open on schedule, how does this impact, what our decision this evening, how would it impact that?
At this point, we would have to keep our students where they are, which is at JMA, and it would have, you know, a ripple domino backward effect, given that JMA is, the vacating of JMA will be, you know, allowing, you know, the middle school, for Milner Middle School, to open, and so as we all remember, the DME relies on all of these pieces to move one after the other. There was conversation last time with regard to There was conversation last time with regard to some of the athletic pieces, athletic areas not being done until December, so they will not be able, you know, we can't use them until January, and that's still, that's still the case. But for the purposes of instructional programming, August, in speaking to our construction crew, there is, they couldn't give me a major reason why we couldn't open in August. But it would mean there is no movement of our middle school programs. At the lower levels, we would still have the movement, but the pause would have to be Ms. Taylor for, at the middle school, middle school and high school.
So I guess my question, or my concern, is that it's March, and if we close it now, I'm just trying to figure out like what does it mean if we close it and Weaver doesn't open on time, just because things happen? What would that mean?
So as the formerly on the school building committee, one of the things is that they are already on a recovery schedule, the construction is, because of weather. So the blips in terms of the initial schedule, so it's on time, but we had a lot of weather and a lot of wet weather this winter, which didn't allow certain materials to dry on time, so they immediately went into a recovery plan. And the recovery plan, as of the last meeting, which obviously wasn't as recent as the superintendent's meeting, we're actually ahead of the recovery schedule. So they've built that in as part of those issues. So their comments to us has been consistently, every single meeting, one of the public speakers spoke to this earlier at the building committee, we always ask where is Weaver on time in terms of that recovery, and we've actually been making really good progress. So I, one of the reasons I want to underscore that is because it's that recovery plan that's already in place that's actually proactively dealing with those issues. The other thing in terms of, and I know this wasn't your question just now, but the athletics in terms of that phase, which forgive me, I think it's phase three, I can't even remember at this point, it actually is on plan and was always scheduled to be December, so just want to make sure that's clear. It was never scheduled to be August. So we, right now, are completely on time, so I want to underscore that because my expectation, period, is that this building will open on August.
With regard to the, like, I kind of hear technically, right, what would happen if it's not, and would there be like another vote to keep the school open? So I'm wondering if that's what you're...
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's March and the school is slated to open in August, are we premature in our closure of, like, should it be a little closer to the actual opening, like when we're a little more certain?
It's a good question. You know, we have to look at it from a lot of different angles. One other angle that we're looking at and have already made some decisions around, it's around staffing, right? We have per our bargaining, you know, unit requirements and specific dates with regards to specific postings, and so those dates already, you know, came, and so we had to meet those deadlines. Are we, you know, early? We didn't think of it that way, potentially, if we look at, you know, where we are today and then how many months we have till August, but there is significant amount of planning on our end after, after tonight's vote, right? Like letting the state know, beginning some other internal processes and protocols with regards to students and records and all of those pieces.
Wondering perhaps we can ask Ms. Wild, who now is sitting out there, that there is no date attached to the vote, so we're authorizing the closure, but we're not limited as to the time, is that correct, Ms. Wild?
Say more about that so we can close it today and talk to me.
We're not saying that we're closing it today, we're just giving the superintendent the right to close the school.
At some point.
At some point. And we are not limited as to date, and Ms. Wild has confirmed that.
And I will reference the example from last year, which was Capital Community College Magnet Academy, that we closed last year as part of the DME, but still has a class, their graduating class, their final class is still in there, or is still, exists today and will not finish until June. But the vote took place last school year. I understand.
I have a question. My question is around the school code, because I remember in the school choice and facilities committee meeting, we went back and forth with the code, were we going to reactivate the code, were we going to do a new school code for Weaver? And I'm thinking, I thought we had a consensus of what we were saying that meeting, but then I heard something different, so what are we doing around the school code?
So we are still consulting with State Department of Education as to what, any parameters, if any, but the initial, what we went to this, what we're, what the conversation with SDE was around reenacting the old code, that's what we are hoping to be able to do. Okay.
Dr. Vasquez Martens, do you have a comment?
No, it is, yes, we're leaning more towards, give me back to the old Weaver code, to be aligned to the new site.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Or is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Item 4.4, which is similar, it is the closure...
4.3.
Wait a minute.
4.3. That was 4.2.
Oh, 4.3, yes. The closure of Journalism and Media Academy. And the motion is that the Board of Education approve the closure of the Journalism and Media Academy. Madam Superintendent?
Again, this would allow this school to be part of the new Weaver High School, which is scheduled to open in August. It will also, you know, be part of the academic and industry themes offering that are going to be offered at the school.
Chair, am I able to make reference to our speaker, Jason Farkason? In regards to the new Weaver, we do have a very frustrated community that have been engaged and volunteering their time for years. And the feeling is that they are not being heard, they actually put this plan together with, with a lot of your staff, being a part of many committees coming up with this plan, and I just do want to highlight that, though, the, the community that has been dedicated to this process, at this point, they do not feel that the plan that was worked on together is being respected, giving any attention, and they are looking for a voice in this because they are, the community is buying there, it's not only families, it's not, it's organizations, it's, you know, a variety of individuals who have dedicated years to this, and we're coming to a point where they felt, working with your administration, that this would be where the plan they would see, and they would feel that all that they work for is going to come to fruition, and they are not, they do not feel that that's happening. So I'm hoping that we are working with Jason and those who have worked with him many years on this to consider what they are doing to say, whether it's yea or nay or compromise, but they do feel that there is, there is a wall up, so I'm hoping that, that wall could be set aside. So the community, we need the community to be a part of this school for it to be successful, for it to start off on a right foot. So all those years of dedication there are looking to see how that plan works with the plan that will actually happen. I'm for Weaver High School.
Just to give an update as to where the process is, recommendations, I believe initially were non-negotiables as they were presented, and, you know, we clarified that, you know, that it should be referenced as recommendations, and we did have a meeting over the summer and requested that there be some alignment made through, with the district model of excellence, and at that point, our strategic operating plan. I believe, Ms. Brody, you were at one of those meetings in which we had conversations about the alignment. Since then, while it wasn't a request from the steering committee, I did request our internal team to do what is called a crosswalk among the recommendations with our strategic operating plan, and the recommendations speak to best practices, if you will, in high school programming, where we are now, and I believe this was discussed in one of the, one or several of the committees. Teaching and Learning had a conversation and exemplar was shared for one of the areas. The team is working. I believe there was a meeting today, I'm hearing there was another meeting. I know there was a meeting last week, and there was a meeting also today with representatives of this steering committee to have those conversations. I want to clarify that the recommendations, you know, relate to management and operational pieces, and so we have to be, while taking into consideration the recommendations, knowing that, you know, these are management, there are management implications, some of which, you know, relate to staffing and bargaining units and those things, and so, you know, while working with the committee, our team is going to continue to clarify those. The other piece that I'll reference that connects somewhat to what you're referencing, Ms. Brody, but also one of our speakers with regard to using the recommendations as a, I don't know if the word was model, but a word was used around, like, the whole district, and I want to just call to mind the work that we're doing with the Barr Foundation. As you all know, we did get the grant to do the deep research with the Parthenon data analysts around high school programming and college career readiness, and so I know that the piece missing, not in relation only to Weaver and the Weaver Steering Committee, but throughout the district, was the data piece. And we're looking back at the graduating class of 2016 to really understand, you know, what were the programs in place, what was happening in our high schools in order to get us to where we are today, the graduating class of 2016, which, you know, less than 30% was ready to be successful in ninth grade. And so I also want to make sure that, yes, we have recommendations, but there's also other work that's happening, and I'm hopeful that, you know, as our team engages and presents to the Teaching and Learning Committee, that crosswalk, that we're also able to overlay all of these other data findings that we have, because, you know, when we think about school design, there is, as you're saying, Ms. Brody, the community engagement piece is so important to that work, but it also has to be, you know, balanced and triangulated with what are, what the data are telling us, so that we can design programs that are being responsive. So I wanted to also add that because I'm hoping that when the team continues, you know, their work with the Weaver Steering Committee, that there's an opportunity to kind of bring those two together, also with the district model of excellence. The intention, you know, is not to, you know, it's unfortunate that that's the narrative or that that's the feeling, but, you know, we take that and we will continue to work on how to better improve the relationship or where, where the feelings are. We want to be inclusive while balancing the fact that many of the recommendations there actually do exist in the plan, so it's probably an opportunity to, I know it's a lengthy document, so, but to go through one by one by one. I'm looking at it, because you're kind of going like that. I know there was a meeting, and I've not been able to talk to you about the meeting today, but I know that you've been in communication with, with the team. But thank you for...
No problem. And I'll, my last comment will be that this, this plan that was developed, was developed over time, and we're in March, and we're just starting to say, well, we're going to do a crosswalk. They've been trying to be engaged on that level for a while now, and I know that to be a fact. So I don't, at this point, we have to make, it would, it's almost like, is it ti, is it enough time to say, Hartford Public Schools has come up with, with, saying this is the direction we're going, the steering committee is saying, well, this is what we've come up with, because it's not a brand, brand-new document. So I guess the, what I'm saying is the frustration is now, in March, we're having these sort of conversations when they trying to, they tried to come to this point months ago. So it is now, that, that's where the frustration didn't start with, you cannot adopt and accept these recommendations. The frustration was, you're not engaging with us. And I totally understand collective bargaining, it's some things, because I've seen the plan myself, and it's some things that I've expressed, and I've been a part of their community meetings, and I've expressed some of those things, just can't happen. In a perfect world, you could have all this, but because of systems that are in place, we have unions and things, it's just not happening. But it is some components that could have, and I, in my opinion, should have, there should have been some engagement with the steering committee and with the Hartford Public School staff way sooner than now.
So there, we can, we can actually provide, if, additional information as to the engagement and the outreach that has happened throughout, and I know that the last conversation we had, in which you joined us, Ms. Brody, we talked about the connection to the DME that was not made, and so we requested that, you know, there'd be, to see if there were opportunities to make the direct alignment to the DME, and after that, there's been conversation at the committee, at the Teaching and Learning Committee as well, and so it's not work that is just starting, so I want to clarify that. But I do know that there are many, many aspects of the work, and so, Yvette, I know that you're, you've been waiting to kind of add additional information.
So I just want to validate the feelings, and that has been communicated, and we are working with a subcommittee of the steering committee that has been meeting with myself and Ms. Blackburn around next steps and around creating and organizing a community meeting to, one, give updates on the status of Weaver, on the facility, as well as the next steps, and then as well as presenting the crosswalk and letting, letting the community see the crosswalk and helping them understand where we need to fine-tune certain areas, where it's directly aligned, where there's things that may not be as aligned, things that may happen maybe in year one or beyond that. And so we will, we had, we met today, we met last week, we have been speaking to a small group of people and individuals around this to, to make sure that we keep the community informed and about how we're going to do that. And so we have planned, we have initial plans for a community meeting on April 4th. That was just decided, finishing today, and so we will get an invite as soon as possible. So I just want you to know, though, that the outer community may still feel some frustration, and we are trying to address that as quickly as possible and to bring everyone up to speed so everyone knows where we are with Weaver.
Can I, can I just add to that? So Superintendent, you said something was going to be provided just a couple minutes ago, I can't remember what it is.
Yeah, in the Teaching and Learning Committee, we want the, all of the pieces of the crosswalk. It is a very lengthy document. I know that. We initially requested the crosswalk... We initially requested the crosswalk of the Steering Committee and then we also decided to do our, our crosswalk with regard to all of our initiatives, all of our strategies that are happening as well.
Sure, so I think it would be really helpful for the board, right, as, because being on the board, it feels like you're getting information from, from both sides and both sides sometimes are aligned and sometimes don't seem to be. It might be really helpful for us, or at least for me, let me speak for myself, it might be helpful for me if maybe you guys can provide us eventually with a summary of, of what the process has been like, the communication process between the Steering Committee around this conversation, right, from beginning to end, right, till basically today. Give me, give us a summary of that whenever you can, not now, obviously. And maybe, right, because I think he also mentioned the fact that supposedly, and I say supposedly just because I can't, I don't know, but that changes were made to the, to the, to the design of the, of the building that were not, that were not part of the original design, that changes were made to the original design. So maybe if there have been, and I'm not saying that there were, but maybe if we can be provided a list of any changes that were made to the design of the building from, I think the last phase that we voted on was Phase Four, might have been, right, because that was the, the fieldhouse and that stuff, right? So maybe from Phase Four, from that vote on, if any changes have been made to the design of the building that the board might not have been made aware of, right? I don't know that they exist, but if they do, maybe we can get a list. That would be really helpful.
So we will have, we can certainly have a presentation by Arcadis. You know, they usually come and give updates.
Sure.
So we can, we can do that. That kind of sits outside of the Weaver, of this part of the Weaver Steering Committee and the recommendations with regard to the programmatic recommendations.
And if I also may make a recommendation, I would state that with the smaller committee, just ensure that they're speaking to everyone because just again, if we have individuals who are meeting with you all and the staff and then there's others that feel that we're not meeting, that poses an issue. That means that something's not right because there were thousands of Weaver Steering Committee meetings and they were able to congregate and gather, so that means that there has to be some missing piece that we're missing for individuals to not know that there was a meeting last week and that there was a meeting today. So that means there's some breakdown of communication. I don't know if it's on our end or if it's on the outside, but it, just making sure that we bring those who are, I hate to use the word supposed to be at the table, but those who have like the voice that are a part of that Steering Committee, that Committee, excuse me, that they are aware of the things that are going on and making sure that their voice is heard. I do know that we will not be able to have every single individual in the meeting or every single individual going to do tours and things of that nature. However, if we have those who have kind of been the voice and the active voice, ensuring that they are the ones who are a part of that, because to know that you have had a meeting today and then we had individuals come in today, that means there is a breakdown of communication in some form or fashion.
So this is why it's important for us and I know that you're working on a larger community meeting. That was our, that's a request that we actually have and we're hoping that, that the members, you know, are helpful in that process. Nonetheless, we want to move on with having a larger community conversation as to where are we, you know, what are the, you know, the crosswalk and we're trying to find ways to get the, the larger word. We certainly don't want to have anyone feel like they're not part of the conversation, but, you know, perhaps we should not assume, and I'll, we'll own that, right? We should not assume that, that this subcommittee that we're speaking to is sharing the information and so that's something for us to think about. Actually, as you, as you, as you referenced that, I know that you've been diligent, Ms. Avila, in trying to schedule a meeting for quite some time and while it's been received, you've also had to kind of wait because other people wanted to be part of the meeting and so, yeah, so we want to be, we're trying to kind of, you know, be mindful and responsive.
Absolutely. I just think it's, it's more of an intentional, even if it's a follow-up email, just to the masses of like, this is what we discuss, because again, we don't want to assume that information is being trickled down and if it's not, because at the end of the day, we're going to have to own it and with respect as far as communication. It will come from, oh, board is not doing this and board is not doing that. So if we just own it and just kind of do follow-up information and just send it out to the masses of like, just like how we do our public information, that maybe that will kind of show the diligence of what's going on. And I also will recommend during that open forum that we do talk about the pathway into Weaver as well, because I know that is also a community concern. I know we're, we're, we're kind of diving away from where we are with respect to the approval of this, but just ensuring that the, because that's a big thing as well of how we're feeding, because as we're closing these schools, we're talking about how we're feeding kids into Weaver and I know that's a big concern as far as the community as well, so ensure that that's a part of that community conversation as well.
And as Ms. Clark pointed out, we are straying away from the item on the agenda, which is the vote on the closure of JMA. So perhaps, Madam Superintendent, you can commit to giving us an in-depth update of the status on Weaver and we could proceed with our vote. Is there a motion to close JMA?
Do you have a question?
I, I just have a quick point for Chair, I apologize. I was just going to say, is there any way we could use the website as a way of keeping this stuff transparent? Yeah, for all of our buildings and things like that, even if it's high level and then say, hey, this is how you can get more information, because the same thing is happening with MLK. Those are not the only two schools, obviously, that things are happening at and it is unfortunate that there's such anxiety and anxiousness and frustration in the community where I know so many people have worked so hard, for many of us for years, as was noted earlier, who have been involved from a community standpoint. So that was my last point. Thank you, Board Chair.
I have a comment about JMA though. My other quick comment about JMA is, as a proud on-air DJ for 89.9 QFM for more than 25 years until I was, had the opportunity to sit on this board and no longer could actually volunteer my time at the radio station, I was very proud of it and, and really hopeful that it was more integrated, the radio station into the actual learning and use as experiential learning and application, et cetera. I did see that movement in the last few years over at, at JMA. I'm very hopeful that that's going to continue over at Weaver High School Building. It has always been used as an educational tool as well as a community tool, so my understanding is good work is going in in terms of the technology side of it and I do hope that we're able to really push on the programming side of it to make sure it's embedded in the curriculum, so that's all, thank you.
Is there a motion to close JMA?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item 4.4, Contract Amendment Approval Joe Brummer LLC. District contract with Joe Brummer LLC was executed in September, but as work continues, additional school were added and additional materials and costs were incurred. And the motion is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the Superintendent to amend the contract with Joe Brummer Inc. for an additional $105,102.70 for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2019. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, and I'll ask Dr. Sellers and Joe Brummer, who I see here, to speak with regard to the amendment and the rationale and the need for the expansion. I know that this is work that we are committed to doing and that aligns with our district priority around school culture and climate with regard to reducing our chronic absenteeism, making sure that our students feel safe and values, there are lots of connections, but in terms of the expansion, if you can just give us an overview.
Absolutely. Good evening, Board Members. I believe some documents have been shared with you that sort of give an overview of our RAP snapshot as of March, so it gives you an idea of the cohort expansion and these additional funds would allow us to expand into Cohort Six and I hope, Christina, do they have that?
Board docs.
Oh, it's in the board docs, okay. All right, what we give you, again, Cohorts One through Six, the school membership, the year that they're in, the members of the RAP team from each school, and then there's also some data. We show some of our ISS and OSS data at those schools, just to sort of, like I said, give you an idea of where the schools are now. Some of the schools are in year, you see Cohort One is in year two of their implementation, Cohort Two in year two, Cohort Three, this is their implementation year, and Cohort Four and Five are in their training year and you can see the training dates there and then Cohort Six is the cohort we'd like to add. So we're, we're hopeful that we'll get a favorable vote by the board tonight and we're happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Dr. Sellers?
The, the only thing I remember, Mr. Chair, was, I think there was a conversation around these, and I think it might have been, I don't want to put him on the, put too much pressure on you right now because I'm catching you off guard, but Dr. Vasquez Matos, but wasn't there, there isn't necessarily costs that we are, how do, how does the cost relate to this, right? Because I think we said that these costs were already within the budget, right? And it's not that we are adding an additional X amount onto the, the budget that we adopted last year, correct? This is money that's within the budget, we're not looking, we have the money.
Right, so we're not, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So that's correct. There's no, there's no line item increases, these, these budget, these line items are already budgeted in, in Dr. Sellers' division as well as professional learning specifically for this type of work, so we did not have to increase a line item, they were already...
Or, or take money away from anything else, right? That's, yes, all right, thank you, that's it, that's all I have.
No, excellent question.
Yeah.
So the issue is simply that we need to amend the budget to reflect these costs.
To increase the PO, correct.
Any other questions?
Motion to adopt, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, thank you for your support.
Item 4.5 is a first reading of Policy 5124, confidentiality and access to education records. This is first reading, so it does not require a vote. And no comments? And we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to take up the consent agenda as one item?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a move to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have one or two?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, we didn't do it.
Yes, we did not say it aloud, but Ms., Ms. Santiago does have the roll call. We have an executive session on a personnel matter, an attorney-client privileged communications and all the items in here, and pending litigation update. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. So we are in executive session and we are taking Attorney Julia Wilde and Attorney Leander And Madam Superintendent, yes.
Hello, I am your proud Superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved. So, a second.
All those in favor coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We are out of executive session. Something came up about our vote on the consent agenda, so we will need to take a second vote after the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to take a second vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. So is there a motion to take the consent agenda as one item?
So moved.
Second.
Any objections?
Any objections?
Aye.
And your objection?
I would like to pull out consent agenda 5.4.
Okay, she has moved to remove 5.4 from the consent agenda. Is there a second for that?
Take it as a separate vote.
And take it as a separate vote, yes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. So all those in favor of taking up 5.4 as a separate item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion as to item 5.4?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of item 5.4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No opposing, but I would like to abstain from that vote.
Okay, so Ms. Clark is abstaining from the vote, but I believe the ayes have it. Now, is there a motion to take up the rest of the agenda as one, of the consent agenda as one item?
So moved.
A second. So moved.
All those in favor of taking the rest of the agenda, excluding 5.4 as one item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, accepting item 5.4?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Aye.
All those in favor signify... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thanks, guys.